Good afternoon. How y'all doing? Good afternoon. How y'all doing?
Great.
Great, great, great. Dr. Blasagame, how you doing? Man, best day of my life. Welcome to the Griffin Spalding County Board of Education Work Session, May 6th, 2025, starting at 4:10 p.m. Let the record reflect that Ms. Register is excused. She'll be here momentarily. Let's do the roll call. I said you please place all electronic communication devices on silent or either vibrate. This time we'll do a roll call. District 1, present. Register of the 2nd is excused until she gets here. Holmes of the 3rd, Weldon of the 4th, McDonnell of the 5th. We have our quorum. Now we have our prayer and pledge allegiance. Our prayer will be led by Leader Holmes and our pledge will be led by Ms. McDonnell.
Father God, we come once more and again thanking you for this opportunity. We pray, Lord God, that you lead, guide, and direct us down the right path that we need to be for the benefit of all constituents concerned. We ask, Lord God, that you continue to help us make our right decision that will be best for all concerned in our district. And we ask these things knowing that you can and you will. And it's in Jesus' name we do pray. Amen.
Thank you all so much. At this time, we'll move to item 4, the adoption of the agenda. What is the pleasure of this body as it relates to the adoption of this agenda for the work session?
So move.
It's been properly moved by Leader Holmes of the 3rd. Is there a second?
Second.
Seconded by Ms. Weldon of the 4th. Is there any discussion here in nine? When your district is called, please vote. District 1, yes. District 2, yes. District 3, yes. District 4, yes. District 5, consent agenda approved. Next, we'll go to presentations and discussions. Teaching and learning updates, Dr. Audrey Greer. Let the record reflect that Ms. Register is here.
Good evening, Chairman Brown, Board, and Superintendent Simmons. Today, I would like to provide you with teaching and learning updates. We have our non-negotiables, which are to be professional, be accountable, and communicate effectively, and our focus areas leads. We have our mission and vision, which are to be a distinctive brand, have strong leaders and great schools, and to empower each student to graduate college and career-ready. We have our roadmap to success, where we are all aiming to increase our students' achievement. For today's updates, I will communicate updates for advanced learning, instructional materials and resources for health PE and fine arts, and new ELA standards implementation. As it relates to advanced learning, this update will reflect progress towards completing recommendations as communicated by the Gifted Advisory Council. The Gifted Advisory Council convened over several months to review district practices for gifted and advanced learning, identify strengths, challenges, and opportunities with gifted and advanced learning, and provide recommendations for improvement that should be implemented over a three-year period. For today, I will provide you an update on the recommendations that were given to us for year 1 and one recommendation for year 2. This slide highlights all of those individuals who contributed to our Gifted Advisory Council. It was developed in February of 2024, and it was comprised of two BOE members, school and district administrators, parents and community members, and student representatives. This committee identified five key findings tied to FTE funding, student enrollment, student performance, curriculum and instruction, and building supervision and leadership specifically for Program Challenge. So again, I'm providing you with updates for year 1 recommendations. The first recommendation was to increase the number of gifted endorsed teachers annually. There are currently 22 teachers in Gifted Cohort 1, and those teachers will finish the program in June of 2025. There are an additional 25 teachers for Gifted Cohort 2, and they will complete the program during the 25-26 school year. We are working with Griffin RISA to support the work of these teachers. The second recommendation was to increase communication with students, parents, teachers, and administrators about gifted education. We all, we know that communication with parents is ongoing. We do look to improve our communication for the 2025-26 school year by providing regular communication updates from the Coordinator of Advanced Learning. The third recommendation, update the GSCS continuation policy to address students who do not make adequately, adequate progress annually. The GSCS continuation policy has been developed, and it is currently under review by classroom teachers as well as school and district leaders. Feedback from the review will be used to finalize the policy, which will go into effect next school year. The next recommendation, develop a plan of communication between Program Challenge and the base schools. The Program Challenge site coordinator regularly communicates with schools concerning student achievement, discipline, transportation, and special education services. The Advanced Learning Coordinator also regularly communicates with schools regarding student achievement and gifted eligibility for those students who attend Program Challenge. The next recommendation, provide different instruction to gifted and non-gifted students in grades K through 12. This update really provides an overview of what's taking place at elementary, middle, and high school. For the elementary schools, we did start the school year off with seven cluster model schools, including Futral, Crescent, Ann Street, Jordan Hill, Jackson Road, Morland Road, and Oars. As a part of this model, students continue to go to Program Challenge on their assigned day, but they also receive gifted and enrichment instruction at the base school from a gifted certified teacher. As relates to middle school, during the 2025 school year, the district will implement the Middle School Acceleration Pathway, in which students enrolled in gifted and honors classes will complete a capstone project throughout the school year. I will provide you with a little bit more information on that capstone project and the Middle School Acceleration Pathway later in this presentation. For high school, we know that our students will continue participating in AP and Dual Enrollment Coursework. The next recommendation, annually increase the number of gifted students receiving services daily in their own buildings. As mentioned before, we did increase from zero to seven, the number of cluster model schools across our district. It is our hope that in the very near future, we will bring aboard the other four elementary schools. Next, dedicate a building administrator to the Program Challenge building to oversee the school operations and implementation of the curriculum. As of July 2024, Program Challenge has a site coordinator who oversees school operations and curriculum implementation. She is supported by the Executive Officer for Elementary Schools and the Department of Teaching and Learning. The final year 1 recommendation is to provide instruction so that students are able to transfer their critical and creative thinking skills to academic areas. And again, we're looking to continue the offering of our cluster models, implement the Middle School Acceleration Pathway for middle schools, and continue having our high school students participate in AP and enrollment coursework. The year 2 recommendation that we have is to adopt and implement a more robust curriculum tied to core content tied to the standards in elementary school and middle school. We know that our elementary schools, for the most part, receive gifted services at Program Challenge, and we are looking at implementing a new curriculum for the upcoming school year at Program Challenge. As it relates to middle school, you do have hyperlink board members, the GSCS Middle School Acceleration Pathway. With this pathway, our students will have an opportunity to earn high school core credits in ELA, math, science, CTAE, and fine arts. Moving along to updates for instructional materials and resources for health PE and fine arts. Board Policy IFAA provides guidance on how the district should proceed with a review and adoption of instructional materials and resources. We use this guidance and reviewed materials for health PE and fine arts from Monday, March 10th through Friday, April 4th. The goal of the instructional materials and resources adoption is to provide all students with the tools to engage in positive learning experiences and facilitate a deeper understanding of the content. The resources will align to the content GSE, meet the diverse learning needs of students, foster reading, writing, speaking, and solving daily, and provide a coherent assessment system, including formative and summative uses. As it relates to the adoption for health and PE, State Rule 160-4-2.12 requires local districts to establish a committee to review health PE instruction materials and resources. Our district committee was comprised of 22 parents, teachers, community representatives, student representatives, and school and district administrators. Senate Bill 401, Section 2A requires each local school Board of Education to prescribe a course of study and set education and AIDS prevention for such grades and grade levels in public school systems as shall be determined by the State Board of Education. Our committee reviewed materials based on the alignment to the Georgia Health Education Standards of Excellence, compliance with state laws, including Aaron's Law and human trafficking laws, access and equity, assessment practices, and the quality of teacher resources. There were two vendors for elementary and additional two vendors for secondary health and PE. At this time, I will provide you with an overview of those vendors and the results. The two vendors for elementary health are Three Rs with GCAP and Quaver Ed. Both vendors met or exceeded expectations. The two vendors for secondary health are Goodheart, Wilcox, and Choosing the Best. Again, both vendors exceeded or met expectations. As it relates to the adoption for fine arts, we also had two vendors, and I will review their results. For fine arts, we have Digital Theater Plus, as well as Perfection Learning, Drama Basic Projects. Both vendors met or exceeded expectations. What I would like to do, board members, is come back to you at the next board meeting to adopt one vendor for elementary health, for secondary health, and for fine arts, based on what you see here today. The last update is for our new ELA standards implementation. For your convenience, board members, I have hyperlink several additional and supporting files in this part of the presentation that you can reference. The State of Georgia will implement new Georgia, new ELA standards for the 25-20-26 school year. Our district has a two-year timeline for adopting, implementing, and supporting the transition to Georgia's new ELA standards. So let's take a look at our first year. From January 2024 through December of 2024, we have four overarching tasks that were completed. Our district core team completed training and implementation planning with the Georgia Department of Education. What I have linked for you is our district-wide two-year implementation plan that highlights what we have been doing as far as communicating with our stakeholders and providing guidance for ELA and graduation and professional learning. In May of 2024, school leaders were asked to identify a member of their staff to participate on the ELA task force. These individuals joined the district core team in participating in training offered through Georgia DOE and Griffin RISA. Those training sessions launched in August, and they continued through December. Through September 2024 through December of 2024, our classroom teachers were trained at the building level by those ELA task force members. The same information that was provided to us from the Georgia Department of Education and Griffin RISA, we in turn provided to our teachers. In January, February, and March, we launched stakeholder community meetings for both elementary and secondary. During these meetings, we had an opportunity to give parents an idea of what to expect in, as students implement the new ELA standards for the new school year. From January through April, we continued our training here at the district level and with the Georgia Department of Education and Griffin RISA. In April, the beginning of April, we launched a thought exchange survey. That survey was launched from April 1st through the 18th to ascertain stakeholder perceptions about the ELA standards rollout. Overall, the teachers did feel that they have been trained well and that they are ready to move forward with the new implementation. They are concerned about the instructional time that they have on any given school day to cover all of the content, and I think that that is a shared concern across the state. We are prepared to, to continue to provide professional learning and guidance to classroom teachers and leaders as well as we implement the new standards. We did also launch our curriculum revisions in the month of April. As you see on this document, we have representation from every school in the district across all of our content areas, which was very important to us so that everyone has input on what we place in front of our students. As we continue to prepare for our ELA standards to be implemented for next school year, we will, beginning in July, offer district-level PLC collaborative planning sessions, in-person professional learning at the district, as well as school-based professional learning as needed. This concludes the updates from the Department of Teaching and Learning. Any questions?
As we've heard the presentation from Dr. Greer as it relates to updates for teaching and learning, do we have any questions at this moment? All right, so it looks like the block is hot, so we'll go ahead and go to Ms. Weldon of the 4th for questioning.
Okay. Good afternoon, Dr. Greer.
Good afternoon.
I'd like to ask you, are you gifted certified?
I'm not, no ma'am.
Okay. And I want you to understand that these recommendations, I know, are not coming from you, but they're coming from the Gifted Advisory Council that was created last year after the events occurred with the cluster model pilot. I'd also like to know if you have any data that you can share today or later as to how the cluster model pilot did as compared to the resource model at the enrichment center. Do you have any data on that?
I do not have any data on that, excuse me, but we know right now we are in the midst of Georgia milestones, so once we are finished with Georgia milestones, we will be able to provide that data.
Okay, good. I'll be looking for it. Did the pilot project that Dr. Taylor put in place, spring of '24, improve test scores? You wouldn't know that yet either.
No, ma'am.
Okay, I'll wait for that data later. Okay, also, I wanted to note that I noticed that most of the selected schools for the pilot last year were already higher performing schools, and all gifted students in the system should have an equal opportunity for the same gifted services. So this poses a question, are all the schools equitable in that model?
In the cluster model, or are you talking about the pilot?
Well, the pilot.
The pilot that was...
Let's say both.
So right now, right now, I have the cluster model schools. So we have Futral, Crescent, Ann Street, Jordan Hill, Jackson, Morland, and Oars. Those schools are able to provide the cluster model because they have gifted certified staff. For those schools who do not have the model, they may or may not have gifted certified staff. So in terms of equity, that may pose a problem with making sure the other four schools. However, we do have those schools represented in our gifted cohort, so while they may not have implemented it this school year, that does not mean they will not implement it for next school year.
Okay. Okay. Now, having taught, tested, and created curriculum at the enrichment center, serving gifted students, I worked there, you know, for about 18 years. I do have some concerns, comments, and questions, mainly concerning number four, curriculum and instruction from the recommendations from last year's Gifted Advisory Council. First of all, I want to say that I think it's critical, the decisions made about curriculum for the gifted students. And I also believe that the local board plays a critical role in ensuring that all students have access to a quality education. It is the board's responsibility to provide engaging and high-quality instruction and to implement a coherent and viable curriculum for all students, according to the strategic map the system has adopted. I also want to say that not all states mandated gifted programs, some of them rely on local districts to develop their own policies, and that was found from the National Association for Gifted Students. Also, the National Association for Gifted Students, as of 2024, only 32 states have policies regarding gifted or talented students, whereas in 12 states, policies and procedures related to gifted or talented programs are set by the local school districts. I also want to show that the Georgia Board of Education Rule 160-4-2.38, the education program for gifted students in the state of Georgia, I want to state that for the board and for the parents or anybody that's listening, curriculum services to be provided. The local board shall develop curriculum for gifted students that incorporates the State Board of Education-approved curriculum. Local board curriculum for gifted students shall focus on developing cognitive learning, research, and reference in metacognitive skills at each grade level grouping, using principles of differentiation in one or more of the following content areas, math, science, English, social studies, world language, fine arts, career, technology, and agricultural education. It also states that the local education agency, which is the board, will review, revise, and do revisions as needed. Some of my questions pertaining to the presentation are, it says that these recommendations for improvement should be implemented over a three-year period. Now, is this set in stone, or is it just recommendations?
They were recommendations from the council, yes.
Will they have to be voted on by the board? Do you know?
They were not voted on by the board, but they were brought to the board.
Right. Okay. Okay, the key findings for the Gifted Advisory Council Advanced Learning Update. Number one says the FTE funding is not maximizing the funding potential. How so? What examples? What seems to be wrong? I don't get that one.
So on the day of FTE, which is generally on a Tuesday, those students who receive gifted services on that day are the students who are actually counted. The other students not receiving gifted services on that day will not be counted. So for that particular finding, we wanted to make sure that you see the key findings here on the side.
I do.
So making sure that there were gifted teachers at the base schools was a part of how we addressed that. In the event that students did go to PC on a Tuesday, if there were other grade levels who were left at the base school on a Tuesday, we would still receive gifted FTE funding for those students.
Okay, okay.
Yes, ma'am.
Okay, and student enrollment, it says students who are enrolled in the gifted program do not remain enrolled after 5th grade. I think that many gifted school students leave because of the type of model and curriculum that we use in the gifted for middle school. Many students that I see later on that are in middle school will say things like, oh, we missed Program Challenge, you know, it's not the same. So my recommendation or thoughts are, we need to be focusing on middle-grade school curriculum and how to keep those students here. The elementary students, you know, don't tend to leave, and things seem to be going well, well there. Okay, let's keep moving. All right, increase the number of gifted endorsed teachers. We tried that before. It's been many years ago, but I was teaching there at the center, and I believe Laura Yeoman's was the director over gifted, and they were trying to get a gifted certified teacher on every grade level, and the system paid for these teachers to get their gifted certification, and then they left. related to gifted or talented programs are set by the local school districts. I also want to show that the Georgia Board of Education Rule 160-4-2.38, the education program for gifted students in the state of Georgia, I want to state that for the board and for the parents or anybody that's listening. Curriculum services to be provided. The local board shall develop curriculum for gifted students that incorporates the state board of education-approved curriculum. Local board curriculum for gifted students shall focus on developing cognitive learning, research, and reference in metacognitive skills at each grade-level grouping, using principles of differentiation in one or more of the following content areas: math, science, English, social studies, world language, fine arts, career, technology, and agricultural education. It also states that the local education agency, which is the board, will review, revise, and do revisions as needed. Some of my questions pertaining to the presentation are, it says that these recommendations for improvement should be implemented over a three-year period. Now, is this set in stone, or is it just recommendations?
They were recommendations from the council, yes.
Will they have to be voted on by the board, do you know?
They were not voted on by the board, but they were brought to the board.
Right. Okay. Okay, the key findings for the Gifted Advisory Council Advanced Learning Update. Number one says the FTE funding is not maximizing the funding potential. How so? What examples? What seems to be wrong? I don't get that one.
So, on the day of FTE, which is generally on a Tuesday, those students who receive gifted services on that day are the students who are actually counted. The other students not receiving gifted services on that day will not be counted. So, for that particular finding, we wanted to make sure that you see the key findings here on the side?
I do.
So, making sure that there were gifted teachers at the base schools was a part of how we addressed that. In the event that students did go to PC on a Tuesday, if there were other grade levels who were left at the base school on a Tuesday, we would still receive gifted FTE funding for those students.
Okay, okay.
Yes, ma'am.
Okay, and student enrollment, it says students who are enrolled in the gifted program do not remain enrolled after fifth grade. I think that many gifted school students leave because of the type of model and curriculum that we use in the gifted for middle school. Many students that I see later on that are in middle school will say things like, oh, we missed Program Challenge, you know, it's not the same. So, my recommendation or thoughts are, we need to be focusing on middle-grade school curriculum and how to keep those students here. The elementary students, you know, don't tend to leave, and things seem to be going well, well there. Okay, let's keep moving. All right, increase the number of gifted endorsed teachers. We tried that before. It's been many years ago, but I was teaching there at the center, and I believe Laura Yeomanz was the director over gifted, and they were trying to get a gifted certified teacher on every grade level, and the system paid for these teachers to get their gifted certification, and then they left. So we're right back where we started at. We're still trying, currently 22 teachers are in the cohort, and we'll finish the program in June of '25. You know, we've already paid and tried that before, and it didn't work, but I still think that we need, you know, to continue that, but I just remember that was the focus at one time, and like I said, we spent all that money on training these teachers and then they left to go to other districts. So we need to look at that way to keep these teachers here. Okay, the continuation policy is currently developed by classroom teachers, I think that's excellent, and will that have to be approved by the board first?
I don't think it will need to be approved by the board, but we will submit it to the State Department of Education for their approval.
Okay, that's perfect. All right, let's continue. You mentioned that there are seven Cluster Models schools and only four left to be added into the Cluster Model. Once those four are added into the Cluster Model at their regular schools, will they continue on to attend Program Challenge?
Absolutely.
Oh, okay, good. All right, now, you said that you were going to explain what the pathways and capstone project is. What is the capstone project?
So, that is actually the option that we are providing for our middle school students to increase enrollment or keep them from leaving when they do get to middle school, so you kind of touched on that a moment ago. When they get to middle school, they will now have opportunities to earn high school credits in ELA, math, science, CTAE, and fine arts. Each one of those courses will have a capstone project which students will work on for the entire school year with their classroom teacher. We have actually built in days in the curriculum that we're revising right now to allow them time during class to work on that, and it will be an opportunity for them to really improve their critical thinking, creativity skills, and exercise some of those gifted talents that we know that they have.
Is there anywhere I can go to look up capstone project, and it can show me some of the examples that'll be used?
Yes, so if you click this link, it will take you to an overview of each content area's capstone projects.
Okay.
If you wanted to go specifically to see some math capstone projects, they are available through Georgia DOE Inspire. Those are the capstone projects we will use.
Okay. All right, and on the last page, I think we've answered that one. So y'all's hope is that the capstone project will entice or help the middle schoolers to stay in the county, right?
Stay in the district as well as provide them an opportunity to increase their critical thinking and creativity skills. We want to make sure that as those students complete honors and advanced learning coursework in the middle school, that it is not the exact same lesson or content that the other students may be completing in the general ed classroom.
Okay. Says the new curriculum will be implemented at Program Challenge next year. Can you explain that a little bit more?
So, right now, we have the Program Challenge Coordinator as well as our Advanced Learning Coordinator working with the teachers at Program Challenge to assess their current curriculum that they developed and aligning that curriculum to a research evidence-based curriculum. So, with the work of the entire team, the teachers, and the leadership at Program Challenge, it is our goal to implement that new curriculum in the fall.
Okay, so I guess that answers my next question. Have the gifted teachers been involved in this new curriculum that y'all are working out?
They're involved in it right now.
Okay, so they do have some say into it?
They will have some say, yes, ma'am.
Okay, so what will happen to the units that they have developed over the years that have been outstanding units that incorporated the Georgia state standards and the national standards as well?
So, they will probably still be able to lean on some of those units as well. They have different blocks of time during their school day, so we're not looking to abandon any work that they've done. We're still hoping to build on that work and continue.
Okay, that's what I would hope, because as I taught there, I developed a lot of those units, you know, with the teachers there, and like I said, they're embedded with all the state standards and the national gifted standards as well, so they're excellent units. Was the curriculum supposed to be revised or introduced in year one or year two?
Year two.
So, but we're doing it now?
We're revising it right now in year one to implement in year two.
Okay, I gotcha. Okay. All right. I have a question. Dr. Bell is certified and gifted, and she is the site coordinator there at Program Challenge. She would offer them such guidance as reviewing and discussing and doing the current revisions for the curriculum, so I think that it would, she would be a great asset to look over the units that they have already been using. Is she involved in that?
Yes, yes, ma'am, she's involved.
Okay, so y'all are not going to discard or throw away the units that they've created?
No, they may be used at a different time during their instructional day, but that is not the goal, to just discard or abandon the work that they've been doing.
Okay, like, for example, I know the marine biology unit that was taught there, I did not develop that curriculum, it was already there whenever I got there.
And they do that.
That was like an 18-day unit, so my concern is, I don't see how y'all are going to build in this new curriculum that you're discussing when that unit is requiring an 18-day, full day of learning.
And we're still on the question around, there's other board members that need to get their questions in, and so what I want to do for you, Ms. Weldon of the Fourth, is I would like for you to, I mean, you have much passion for what you speak, you've been a gifted teacher in our district, and what I would love for you to do is to get with Dr. Simmons, or his designee, maybe Dr. Ridley or Dr. Greer, but what I want you to do is, because some of your questions that were not answered, and if you need more understanding for the questions that you have, to work with them so that we can, other board members can get their questions in. Are you okay with that, or do you still have more? How many more?
No, I still have some more comments.
Okay, all right, so what we'll do is, we'll go ahead and let you try to wrap it up.
Okay.
And then, we'll go ahead and move to Ms. McDonald.
Okay, my next question is, have y'all been involved with the surrounding counties, the directors of education in the surrounding counties, what they're doing for gifted?
Yes.
What counties have you spoken with?
So, Dr. Barnes, as our Advanced Learning Coordinator, she speaks with Fayette County. She works with somewhere, some, a school district further south, I want to say-
Dr. Greer, excuse me for a second. Dr. Barnes, let me get you to come to the podium, please. Dr. Barnes, share with the board, if you would-
Thank you, Dr. Warren.
-the districts that you're in communication or collaboration with as it relates to the execution of gifted services in Griffins Spalding, not just in comparison, but in non-comparison.
We've, I've talked with, I've worked with Fayette County, I've also worked with Bartow, I've worked with Clayton, and we've worked with Albany as well.
Okay. Well, I spoke to several curriculum directors in the surrounding counties too, and they all said that there is no absolute set curriculum available for gifted, and it doesn't exist. Would you agree with that? It's not something you can purchase?
There is, no, there really isn't. There are some schools that have developed some curriculum, but there is not one designated curriculum that you have to use for gifted students.
Right, so it just doesn't exist, right? I've not seen it in the 18 years that I was looking for curriculum. Also, I spoke with St. Elmo's down in Columbus, Muskogee County, and that's the school that Program Challenge is patterned after, and they have been around since 1991, and they have also struggled with keeping their center open and having their curriculum constantly, you know, changed. I was told that it was a good thing, though, that there's not a set curriculum that you can buy, because that allows the teachers to create the curriculum based on the Georgia standards and national standards, and that allows the teachers the freedom and the openness that Program Challenge, that gifted children need. And I also think, in my research, speaking with others, they said that the curriculum should consist of a personalized learning with, where kids have choice, and I know at Program Challenge, they had choice at one time at what they studied, and that causes them to buy into the program more, what they're learning. But my concerns are heavily on this new curriculum, so I may ask to make a visit and come see what y'all are proposing. Would that be acceptable?
Whatever. In order to do that, just reach out to the superintendent to get it scheduled.
Okay, that's exactly what I'll do. I did speak to about five different counties, and one particular gifted director stated that they use the Resource Model, but then they had changed to the Cluster Model, and then when they gathered their data, it showed that it, there was no change. The data didn't improve, it didn't hurt, it was just basically the same. So, I appreciated that information because it supports the fact that the Cluster Model is not the best and the Resource is not the best, you know, both are acceptable. But I don't see how the Cluster Model, a 45-minute day, can allow enough time for those units that are developed to be taught. All right, let's see, the Georgia DOE says curriculum must have an academic content focused on the Georgia curriculum standards, which Program Challenge does have, but it should focus on interdisciplinary enrichment activities and not on any one content area. And that concerns me, because I don't want Program Challenge to become just a science-focused school or a math-focused school. I don't want them to be used to remediate, because I feel like the remediation should be done the other four days when they're not attending Program Challenge by the regular classroom teacher who knows what their strengths and weaknesses are. When those children attend Program Challenge, I believe that the minute they step off that bus, they should be taught with gifted standards by the state of Georgia and the national gifted standards. It should not be any remediation time. Those students have met the criteria that's set by the state of Georgia in those four areas, motivation, creativity, academics, which they're tested in reading and math, and in mental abilities. And in that mental abilities, most of these students IQs, well, not most of them, all of them have to be over 130 to meet, to pass that test, so we're dealing with exceptionally smart children. But the curriculum change has become a real concern for me. It seems that Program Challenge is always the main focus when gifted is presented. It has provided an excellent teaching service to the gifted students for about 30 years. My child was served gifted through the pull-out model, where she would go to the gifted teacher's classroom one day a week at her school. The Enrichment Center had not opened at that time, but I can see Program Challenge from a parent's perspective as well as a teacher's perspective. And in the years that I worked there, it was a constant struggle to keep the center open. We were always fighting for funding. Curriculum was always dedicated to the teachers, their units were excellent, but it never was looked at by any curriculum director. It's been a continuous struggle with keeping the center open and the curriculum, and it shouldn't be that way. We should move forward and work in a positive way to support that center, because it's one of the better things that we have in this system to offer these children. Let's see if I have any more questions. I do think the system's always tried to change the curriculum on the elementary level, and that's not where our problem is. Our problem's in middle school. That's where we need to make our focus. And that's my last comment. Thank you for allowing me the extra time.
No problem at all, I just want to say thank you for your passion. You have much passion for what you speak because of your experience, and so I just want to say thank you for sharing with us your thoughts and your feelings, and we greatly appreciate it. All right, we have more questions as it relates to this particular item. We're going to move to the vice chair of the board, Ms. McDonald.
Thank you, Mr. Brown. Ms. Weldon, I just wanted to commend you for bringing up some really important stuff, because it is important. I was on that committee, and it was eye-opening for me. I think we did a lot of good work, and I appreciate you informing the public again of what we did get accomplished. I want to be sure, as the parents that were on that committee a year ago, a little over a year ago, that we include the parents with this redo, the remake, the re-whatever, because they're going to be highly offended if they're not included. That's what caused a lot of the skirmish over a year ago when we really didn't get feedback from our stakeholders, and it's imperative, in my opinion, as a board member, that we get feedback from our stakeholders, and in this situation, it would be the parents of Program Challenge students. So can you assure me, Dr. Greer, that parents will be included?
Yes, ma'am.
All right, very good. One other question. About the vendors for the PE and drama, who decides which vendors you decide upon? Is there a committee that will decide? Not just the point system, is there teachers, parents, students? Who decides that?
Yes, there was a committee. The committees included teachers, leaders, students, and community members as well. So that collective committee, they are the people who contributed to what you see, as well as stakeholder surveys contribute to what you see. They have made their wishes known by completing the surveys, and that is the overall rating that you see for each. It is not one person, it is a committee of individuals for both health and fine arts.
Okay, all right. And one other comment, I hope that, back to Program Challenge and that building, which is, to me, is so special. Dr. Bell, you're a rock star, you know, you've always been a rock star to me, and with her experience and her gifted certification, she brings a lot to the table, without question. But I also want to be sure that we maintain the uniqueness of the program at Program Challenge. We can't get, we can't allow those kids to get off the bus and just go to Ms. McDonald's science class of general ed students. We can't have that. Does that make sense?
It does.
So I hope that our, one of our main focuses will be always to maintain the uniqueness of the program that we have here. And again, I just want to commend Ms. Weldon for her research, her phone calls, allowing this board to become a little bit more educated about the situation, and I would hope that someone will take notes if she meets with you, or Dr. Bell, or Dr. Simmons, or his designee, or whoever, that we will be informed about the remaining questions or discussions that she has, so we will be informed to be able to make a good decision for the people that we serve. Okay? Thank you. Thank you again, Ms. Weldon. Thank you, Dr. Greer.
All right, thank you. Going to my right, Ms. Regis, any questions? Mr. Holmes? All right, thank you so much, Dr. Greer. Next up, we have FY '26 budget update from Mr. Byron "Moneybag" Yo Jones.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Good evening, board members. I'm going to start with the goal of this presentation at the beginning and see how it ends. So my goal in this presentation is to take any questions that you have, so then when we come back on May 20th, we have a public hearing, 6 o'clock, and we're going to ask you all to adopt the final budget at 6:30. So if you have any questions, I'd be glad to entertain that. So this presentation, again, is familiar to you, there's a couple of changes to it. Again, communicating effectively tonight is my goal, mission and vision, again, empowering all the students to graduate college and career-ready. Again, our roadmap to success, we're looking at all of our spending and our revenues ultimately from bottom to top, increasing student achievement. So again, if you see something in yellow, I had a little bit of a change versus the last meeting, so the general fund, again, changed just slightly. It's going to continue to change as we mainly are telling you, as we look at the salary and benefits file, I'll talk about that again a little bit more in a minute, but, Mr. Chairman, you made a comment in the last presentation about some salary savings, so that's been recouped in this figure, so it's down just a couple of hundred thousand dollars in the spending, and this is not the revenue. I'm going to focus on the revenue side in just a minute to you. So, I would look back at last year, and this was somewhere in the $181 million range when you all adopted it on June 4th of last year, so again, it's a- So, so again, it's a little bit higher this year. FTE counts, nothing changing from this, these, these figures are locked in eighty-nine, seventy-four. So our FTE does not include pre-K. If you look over to the right, about eighty-seven-hundred is the physical bodies, not the FTE in the district. And Dr. Ridley updates us every week on the warm body count, so it's just hovering around that, that, that number. So some of our new spending...
Go back up, Mr. Jones. I just wanted to look...
Yes, sir. So if the FTE number on the bottom left is higher, you got some higher-weighted categories of the children, like we were talking about gifted or special ed would be higher than a one-point-oh. So they will, their cost to educate them will be a little bit more than a regular education student. That's, that's really the theory that's behind that.
All right, thank you.
So some of our budget categories, the only two yellows that changed a little, we got a little bit more of an improved quote with the Reed United Initiative and then some of the targeted support for designated schools. Again, that's our instructional coaches and some of our office support for elementary schools and a few other things there. But we, we looked at the salaries and we think we're a little bit high on that. So those are the only two items that changed. I want to make sure that I'm clear on this slide, though. I didn't put an asterisk at the bottom, but, but for example, the top item with safety and security, we've got multiple safety and security grants. So it's not necessarily general fund usage. So it would be grant-funded, hopefully it's an in and an out, for lack of a better way to say it. And then in our educational materials adoption for a million bucks, that's primarily Title I for some of our I-ready expenses and then some of our adoption for electronic resources and textbooks that Dr. Greer talks about frequently with us. That was through ESPLUS, ESPLUS seven, I believe it is. So all of this is not general fund. Next couple of slides have not changed, but, but seriously, we, we need to just come to terms that the employee expense would step increases and health insurance is really high. We don't, we don't have a choice on that. So about a little bit over twenty-two thousand a year for certified and classified. Again, I've, I've been around twenty years, this is, I think, the first time that they've ever matched for the classified and the, and the certified being costing the same amount. And then TRS is going up again a little bit more than a percent on those that are eligible for those benefits. So this slide here really talks to our fund balance usage. It's up a little bit from the last presentation. So under the difference column, we're about eleven-point-three million. What I want y'all to understand is when I come back in for the final time, that number could, could go up a little bit, which I don't anticipate. I anticipate it coming down a little bit more just because of what I'm fixing to explain to you in a second, but revenues, we've gotten a little bit more clarity on, but we'll, we'll look at the salary and benefit file one more time. We've got some improved data that I just talked to Ms. Battle about before we came in here. We looked at some, some of our total comp statements that we sent all employees here to tell them what they were projected to get for the year and some of our figures that when we look at that salary file, maybe, maybe, hopefully we're just a little bit high on. So again, fund balance usage, you all know we have that in reserves. Lonnie, if you will, can you pull up that other slide? I want to show the board right quick. In your packets, did y'all receive another little typed sheet that Mr. Brandy here in the audience helped me type? Hopefully, I wanted you to just understand that, that there was a reason that the fund balance has grown to where it is. So let, let's just have a little bit of a review lesson. So I got here in June of 2020, this budget was pretty well put together. For those on the board, I presented it to you, but I didn't have a lot to do with getting it together. But if you look down in your bottom, on these sheets on the yellow, the, the bottom two, two numbers, eighteen to sixteen million was your fund balance. Okay? So you were more in line with the fifteen percent on a hundred million budget. FY twenty-two, this would have been the first one I was actually helping Dr. Simmons put together, still around sixteen million in fund balance. FY twenty-three, it grew twenty-six, twenty-two million. And again, during these times, we were budgeting on our revenue side really conservatively. So we were outperforming the budget, the bottom line. If you see us with a deficit budget using fund balance, but we actually come into the positive, we have amended our budget through the year, which we by law have to do before we close the year, but we actually overperformed versus the budget. FY twenty-four, thirty-six million, projected to be twenty-nine million. And then the current year we're in right now, approximately forty million. And then the tentative budget that you all approved a few weeks back, which has the actual audited balance from last year at forty-five-point-two million. And so thirty-five, thirty-three, somewhere in that range, if, if we use our fund balance to balance this, this coming year's budget, you would still have that amount left in, in the bank, in fund balance. So as far as that goes, I hope y'all understand fund balance. If you, if you not asked me here in just a second, I want to keep rolling. Go ahead, Lonnie, go back to the other slide for me. I want to, for the revenue, the top number here, one-hundred-and-seventeen million, in the prior presentations, I think we were using a hundred-and-eighteen or somewhere between a hundred-and-eighteen, a hundred-and-nineteen, so it's down a little bit. So I wanted to talk to you about five things, six things on my sheet and just, I'll talk about each one of them. So House Bill five-eighty-one, everybody knows about that one. So that was the, the item that would have held the appreciation of property values to CPI. You all, we opted out of that, so that's actually put to bed for now. House Bill ninety-two is another item you're going to hear about. I'm relating this back to the revenue in just a second. That is something on May twentieth, the superintendent and I may be bringing you an item you have to certify. So there's a new rule that you have to put the predicted rollback millage rate on the tax assessment notice. So we're working with Dr. Ledbetter, Dr. Simmons, and I think it's, and Robbie down at the tax assessor, I've been talking with him. So we may have to bring that to you. That will be our best guess of what a rollback rate would be, not that we're going to recommend the rollback rate, but we're supposed to be trying to put that on the tax assessment notice. Millage rate, so if you look at your budget book, nobody's asked me about this yet, but in that, in that recommendation section, it's our commitment to try to bring you all a rate that is a little lower than the one that you've been seeing, sixteen-point-seven-four-two. But with that, please understand in the revenues, I've taken into consideration appreciation of values to roll the rate back some. It, it doesn't mean no appreciation in values and roll the rate back. So we, we can get into that more when we get to millage rate hearing time, but if you see something at sixteen-point-seven-two, and we're recommending sixteen-point-five, not to be held at that, but just as a, as a usage, that means that's our attempt to try to, to try to roll it back a little bit. Okay? Other, other local revenues, so what we found in our conservative budgeting is we had been using lower interest rate income amounts. So for example, and this is one of the sheets in your book, we've been using about two-hundred-and-fifty to three-hundred thousand dollars in interest income for the board every year. Well, we bumped that up to about a million or million-one because they've been coming in at three or four percent versus one percent. And so that was an item. And then we, we also got some state revenue figures that came in the day of the tentative budget, when, when you all adopted it. They are three to four million dollars less than last year. Okay? I didn't do you a big example, I'll, I'll sit down with you individually if you need to, but the, the sheet we get from the state has different categories of revenue, FTE, et cetera. There's a bottom section called equalization and that calculation runs two years in arrears, two years behind your tax digest. Okay? And it's a correlated number with how well you're doing in your, your digest of being forty percent of your value. And anyway, it's a low wealth ranking that each district has given in the state of Georgia. So that formula for the last two years, we've had five million of our about sixty-eight million in revenue was equalization. Next year, it's three million. So two and a half million of that is just in that formula that we have no control over. Okay? Bottom line is we lost three and a half million or so in state revenue. Last item I'll mention to you in our retreat, Mr. Chairman, I think you had talked to Mr., Dr. Simmons and I about some potential legislation on senior tax exemptions. So I received a call Monday, Friday, excuse me, last Friday, from a lady named J.C. Martin at the legislative office and asked me if I knew about House Bill seven-fifty-eight. So that's a potential item that will come, come to the voters. I, I need to get some more information, but is it something that may be another voted-on exemption thing that would affect school taxes? That's really all I know to say about it right now, but I wanted you to understand all of these variables are going on. That one would affect the next year, not this budget you're voting on, you vote on, on the twentieth. Okay? That's a digest issue for the FY twenty-seven year, if that was to get voted in.
I don't think so.
The vote wouldn't be till November. This digest is the one we're talking about now.
Let me get Mr. Brown's permission. Thank you. And I'm just saying this because I spoke with Clay Davis last week about this very, he's the, on the Board of Commissioners in District Five, which is our, we represent District Five. It will be on the November ballot as a referendum to the public, obviously, and he was understanding that, that it went into effect on January one. So our common thread of the conversation was, we're in a budget from July one to June thirtieth, as is the county, and that would be a question that I would hope you would ask because that could be pretty devastating to, to us. And, and obviously, Spalding County Board of Commissioners, I, I don't know how we could survive.
My, my understanding, just, just from a little bit of novice on my side, only receiving a phone call, and I'll check, I'll check...
Okay.
Check the backstory on it. But, so you all will approve a budget, tax assessment, tax bills will go out, I'm talking about here in the next couple of months.
Right.
And those will be based on whatever millage rate we come up with. Then there'll be a vote in November and then that will affect the digest of the next year, though, because those taxes will have already come in in a November and December time period before the vote is even, or at the same time the vote's going on. That's my understanding. That, does that make sense? You're, you're adopting a budget for FY twenty-six...
Correct.
With a tax bill that's a twenty-twenty-five calendar year.
Correct.
And I hope I'm saying, it gets confusing now. If you're going to have a vote in November of twenty-twenty-five, it would take effect and they'd have to get all that stuff straightened out. And then at the next time the tax assessment notices and bills go out, that will be the next budget year. That's my understanding of it.
Well, I only bring that up because of the conversation I had with Mr. Clay Davis. I just...
It's going to have an impact, yes, regardless of what year. And I'm bringing it up just to make the board aware that it's a variable, that I wanted to make sure if you hadn't been apprised of it, I, I literally just became aware of it other than it was pointed out at the retreat. We got to do a little bit more research, but I will confirm the budget year that we're talking about.
Yeah, my point is, okay, if it passes or, if it passes in November of this year and for us to have to go with what the referendum states in January one of the following year, I just don't know how that's even possible. But you have the, you have the contacts to check that for us.
I'll, I'll get that...
I appreciate it.
Yes, ma'am.
Thank you. Thank you, Mr. Brown.
But we, we're still on this slide. I just wanted you to, so that y'all understand that the revenue side is pretty well locked in, but that is what has really changed from the last presentation. So, so again, approximately thirty-four million in fund balance. The next couple of slides have not changed. We're pretty locked in on those special revenue funds, debt service funds, capital project funds for anything that we would try to start and finish in FY twenty-six. So our timetable, again, going back to what I said at the beginning, we're here on the bold, a public hearing, six o'clock on the twentieth, asking for adoption at six-thirty, regular BOE meeting, and then we have our advertisements we'll need to do, et cetera. Again, just to repeat, on the twentieth, you will probably be given an additional item to vote on, which will have something to do with House Bill ninety-two, but I've, I've kind of got to do a little bit more research on that. So with that, Mr. Chairman, that concludes my presentation.
All right, thank you. Are there any questions for Mr. Jones?
Not a question, but a request.
Go ahead, good sir.
To the superintendent and Mr. Jones, in, in light of, in light of the state rule about our health and PE, especially our, our middle schools, a lot of people don't realize, you know, we're, we're kind of, I, I don't like to use the term behind, but it is what it is. And I want to propose that we include, on top of whatever has already been decided or discussed, that we include two-hundred thousand dollars to be split between the two high schools so that they can upgrade their, their, their weight program, their, their, their weight resources. And what they can do is assist the middle schools with getting those resources that their school. And I, I'm requesting this because of, of recent trips to schools, you know, right around us that we've talked about and Dr. Simmons has been on. Middle school in our county, a lot of folks don't realize, by the time those kids reach high school, they never been in a weight room. They don't, they don't enter a weight room until they get to high school. But others around us, they have weight programs and things of that nature for all the students, student athletes in middle school. And with that being the case, we're, we are falling way behind in that area. And one thing I do want to bring out is our two high schools, both of them have a hundred percent graduation rate on all of their participants in, in their, in their program. So that says a lot about what they are doing, what they are pouring into those students. And I think it's imperative upon us to give those kids the resources to be even better. And so I'm requesting that we include two-hundred thousand out of our fund balance where we have thirty-three million, nine-hundred-and-nine-thousand, two-hundred-six dollars, two-hundred thousand, which would leave us thirty-three, seven-oh-nine. And that two-hundred thousand be split a hundred to each high school and they will assist our athletic, our county athletic director and the school ADs in establishing a weight program at the middle schools because they, they, they know better how to do that and how to implement it. And so I think that would get us on the, on the board, on, you know, get on the table with some of the surrounding schools that we have to compete with, not only, not only in, in athletic events, but with student enrollment. A lot of, a lot of our kids have transferred to these very facilities that I speak of because they have upgraded facilities. So I, I, I want to make that request that we could look at putting two-hundred thousand out of the fund balance and distribute it to our athletic department at both, both high schools.
So I, I think that's a good request, Leader Holmes, but what I would like to see first is, you know, in our packets, we had the adopted budgets, like five different versions. Do you, do you see the, what we got in our packet? And it was the, it was like a little synopsis from Dr. Simmons and then it had the different adopted budgets.
Can we put it on the screen again?
Yeah. So what I would like to do, because I think we need to have more discussion, Leader Holmes, as it relates to this. And so what I would like to see is if you could work it up in the budget so where, where we could see it as a board, where we could see it, and then we can discuss that two-hundred thousand or a hundred thousand going to athletic programs, where maybe we're not at the point to, I mean, because I know we're saving two-hundred thousand dollars from a former position. So I just, to give a hundred thousand dollars to athletic programs, and this is the first that I've heard of it, the first that the superintendent had heard of it, I just think we need to, you know, come back to the drawing board and see what it does in our budget and where we could, you know, pull it from.
I, I beg the difference on, on, on the first time you all hearing about it, we have been visiting facilities for months and you all haven't taken the advantage or opportunity to go along on the visits. But we, we've been discussing this for months.
The visit has nothing to do with the request for the money.
Well, well...
So my, my suggestion was, Leader Holmes, is just to get with the superintendent and the chief financial officer and get them to work it out. That's, that's the request. Not saying that we don't want to do it, I just would like to see it. This is, and superintendent just said, this is the first time he's heard about this request as well. So I think it's a great idea, but what I would like to see is it well thought out and plugged in with the numbers and given to the board before we add it into our budget, which we look to approve in the next week and a half or so.
That, that's fine, but it's really simple. You, you see we have thirty-three, nine-oh-nine... You see, we have 33,909 in our fund balance, and we take 200,000 and put it into the athletic, but it doesn't take a rocket scientist to see that we'll still have 33,700, 700,000 left. And I just wanna make sure we have it on the table because it's imperative. Some of you may not think so, may not know so, may not understand, but it's imperative, not just for our student athlete, but for our enrollment, our FTE count, because we are losing students because they are recruiting our students. They're recruiting our students, and they have the facilities in place. If you, if you, if you don't believe or don't understand, go visit Pike County, go visit Lamar County, go visit Butts County, and look at their facilities, look what they offer their student athletes. And that's why we lose student athletes because of what they are doing and what we are not doing. We just need to get on the table, get on the playing field, so that we can be competitive in what we offer our student. And that's just a request that I'm asking on the behalf of not, not, not just a school, but our district, because some folks don't even know we don't, we don't offer our kids a wait, wait room facility in middle school. And that's unheard of now. That's unheard of.
One point of clarity, or question for clarity. So Mr. Holmes, are you envisioning capital projects, said differently, construction, or are you looking at equipment for the wait room?
With, with, with what's already been planned and looked at in the past, SPOLOST capital projects, I know we have some, some things that we haven't done, and I don't know what all Mr. Ballard has scheduled as far as capital projects of that sort, but I know we have the facility and the room to upgrade equipment. And that's one of the biggest needs that they have at the high school and the middle school. But as far as a capital project to do, like building or whatever, I'm not sure what Mr. Ballard has, and I don't wanna speak on that, but I do know that that 200,000 split to both high schools can help that both high schools and the middle school acquire equipment that they don't have.
Understood. So, Mr. Chair, Mr. Holmes, I will speak with Mr. Ballard to revisit the campaign for SPOLOST VII, to discuss, share with you the plans for the high schools as it relates to capital projects, and then we can be a little bit more clear about this intention around this That'll help me, help you, help me figure out what we can do. Fair enough?
And I know, because I had a meeting earlier today with a scholar from Spalding High School who sent me an email in regards to supporting our fine arts departments and getting band uniforms. I shared with him that I think the last time Griffin High School received new band uniforms was in '04, when I was a senior in the band. And so in that same position, I know that there's some things in the works to help our scholars at Griffin High School and Spalding High School with the band, but I think that it should be equitable. So if that's the case, we should put 100,000 into our fine arts department and band programs as well to make it more equitable, because just like facility workout rooms and other things are important for our athletic scholars, but I also believe that the experience and the exposure in the fine arts is important. If we can use funds to do that, it's definitely something that we should advocate for and push for. So I would just like to see if we're gonna just do it like that. I would like to see more money given to our fine arts department to support our scholars far beyond what they do in the district and at their schools, but to give them that exposure in being able to be college and career-ready and be excited about their experience here, their K-12 experience here, and then take it on to the collegiate level in many different things, whether it's drama, if it's some type of fine arts or whatever. And so just like to advocate for that case, that's we throwing money out there.
Mr. Chair, if I may, as I, as I made my request, I alluded to state rule that has been adopted for health and P. And Griffin High has gotten new uniforms since your senior year. I helped Mr. Reginald Mitchell, the band director, acquire those. But irregardless of that, I was alluding to the state rule about the adoption for the health and P resources and material, and that's why I asked for the extra 100,000 dollar at each high school, and that will also help the middle schools. I just wanted to make that clarification.
The gentleman has much passion for which he speaks. Next.
All right. Thank you so much, Mr. Jones. Next up is information items, governance team comments. Anybody have any comments for the governance team? All righty, we do have executive session. We will be going into executive session to discuss or deliberate upon the appointment of employment, compensation, hiring, disciplinary action with dismissal, periodic evaluation, interview up kids for positions. And so is there a motion on the floor to go into executive session? Seconded by Ms. Weldon. All those in favor, raise your right hand. 5-0, we are in executive session.